So I'm going to start now by coming out of this presentation and I'm going to bring up the handout. So that you can see that we do have the different resources that are here. The first one that you can see on the screen there. Is as busy because it's going to get. This is the front page, which we don't really care too much about. And then the next page on the side there are just definitions and I'm going to refer to those definitions. Because there are some really important things that are involved in this. The next page, we continue on with some practical considerations. We want to make sure that you have. The ability to get yourself organized and to make sure that everything that you're doing is going to be complete and you're not going to have to do something over. If you do something once, that's plenty. You don't need to do it over and over again. Then we're going to talk about effective dates and that is also drawn out in that handout. And then we're going to talk about public hearings and publications. They're all going to be mixed in here as we talk about our resolutions and ordinances. So with that, I'm going to pop back to the handouts here, just to be used as a guideline or as an outline. For anybody that has heard from me before, you know that my husband has this thing called Cindy Logic. It's very logical to Cindy. So I'm going to start with a progression of information and we'll just call it Cindy Logic as a title. All of you know by now that you need to have an agenda for each of your meetings. As I work around the state under my little business that I started after I retired from Iowa State. I am finding that the confusion about some of our committees needing to have an agenda is pretty prevalent. But for the purposes of ordinances and resolutions, it's really the city council that's going to be having to have agendas, which would include actions that would require either resolution or ordinance. And I am saying that you should prepare your agendas because it will prepare not only you, but the mayor and the council and the citizens. Now, my little ha, ha, ha there is I know how many of your mayors and councils, who even open their packet may do it at the council table. So they're not doing the due diligence of actually looking at all the work that you've gone into to prepare that agenda. And then even if you don't prepare the agenda, as far as typing it up and deciding what order it's in, sometimes you have a city administrator or a mayor that are active in preparing it. But for your purposes, you should be able to know what type of action you can expect. Again, that's a ha, ha joke because you don't know what your council is going to do for sure. But with experience, you'll know that they're going to probably take action by a motion, a resolution or an ordinance. And with each of those types of actions, there are certain things that are required in your minutes. So we're going to go through what some of those are. So let's start off with administrative action. When that's taken, a simple motion will do. A motion is where one council person will say, I move to approve the agenda. Or I move to approve the consent agenda, which may include your minutes. Our consent agenda may include the clerk's monthly report or other department reports. I move that we table the item. Those are all motions and they require a simple motion with the majority of the quorum. Now that brings to mind, what is a quorum? There's two different kinds of quarrels. For the city council to have a public meeting, they have to have a majority of the council. If you have five people on your council and you only have three people show up for the meeting, do you have your quorum? Of course you do. But for some actions, particularly in the ordinance and on the resolution side, there's what's called a council quorum, which means that it would require a vote of the entire five council people, even if only three or four of them show up. And we'll discuss some of those as we go through the presentation today. By the way, if any of you have a question or want to make a comment, by all means, just jump right in and we'll go from there. Okay, let me see if I can get this to work. There we go. There are times that it's necessary to have a resolution. Now, when you do get your handout, you'll know that the resolution definition is on page two. And since you don't have it, I am going to read just a little bit of that. Because it is a statement of policy or order or action that the council will provide. It's normally presented in writing, which means it's probably in their packets if you are preparing packets for your city council. And then it requires a favorable majority vote of all members of the council. Again, that is going to be a majority of five, not necessarily just the majority of those that create the quorum so you can have the public meeting. So that's very important and that is stipulated in the state code. It's 380.4 and again, that's in the reference material that you'll receive after the presentation. So then the other thing is that in the packet, we have some suggestions for making sure that the title is appropriate. And we're suggesting that you have a numbering system so that you can keep track of your resolutions and your ordinances for that matter. Motions, you don't have to keep track of like that. But the numbering should be something like maybe you use a calendar. Calendar, so it would be 21-01 for your first resolution of the year. 2102 for the next, for the next resolution and numbering them all the way through. If you use the fiscal year, that's okay too. However, you want to set up a numbering system, but you need that numbering system so that you can keep tabs of the resolutions. If you need to amend a resolution, you need to say, well, this is amending resolution number two. And you may be working on resolution number six. So you need to be able to have those references. In addition to that, you're, you need to have your resolutions as a permanent document. Minutes, which are going to discuss the resolutions are also permanent documents. Some cities have the resolution in a resolution book and that book should have an index in front of it or a glossary saying what the title of each one was. And I always like to see the date that it was enacted on that index that may be in the front of the book. If you choose to put the body of the resolution into your minute book, you can do that as well. Again, you're going to be thumbing through that minute book to look for a resolution compared to having it as a separate. Folder or a separate binder. Usually you have so many of them because they're permanent, you'll be referring to multiple years at a time. If nothing else for reference, the resolution that you had at the beginning of the year to make appointments for various commissions and committees, but maybe something that you want to look at the next year. And again, this should, because it's a permanent document, you should be able to index it in paper as well as electronically. And so when does this resolution pass? If the council passes a resolution at the table and they have the proper number of votes for a quorum of the council. So they, if three people are there and three people vote yes, that's a quorum of the whole council of five. And the mayor signs it and says it's going to pass, then it is effective immediately. Or if there is a date within the body of the resolution that says it will be effective on next date. For example, your wage resolution may have an effective date of July 1. So you can see that there's a number of different resolutions that I've been referring to. And again, a full list is, I can find them. A full list is in the handout that will be coming to you after the session. So depository resolutions, salary resolutions, appointment resolutions, all of these things are listed in, in the. Handout resolutions typically do not need a public hearing. However, some of them do so. Again, there is in the handout, there is a list of resolutions that require a public hearing be conducted before the resolution can be adopted. But when it comes to things like your salary resolution, your depository resolution, those things don't need public hearings. If the count, if the mayor is against the topic in the resolution, the mayor has up to 14 days to veto the resolution. And then the mayor should have in writing a reason for vetoing it. And then the council can override that veto if they wish to. If the mayor takes no action at all, either because he's just too lazy to come into city hall and sign it, or because he just doesn't want to put his stamp of approval on it so that politically he can say, well, I didn't sign that one. Then indeed, it would still pass. So if there is no action by the mayor on a resolution, then it goes on and becomes effective immediately. As long as the council has passed it by the proper majority. And then you also want to make sure that your minutes have to be specific on how that resolution was adopted by the council. So you will include the title of the resolution, the resolution number. And you really need to have a roll call vote so that you can show that it was passed by each person. Okay, chapter 21 says we have to be able to understand what the vote was on each measure. Okay, that includes motions and resolutions and ordinances. But when it comes to resolutions and ordinances, we really need to have that roll call vote. If a councilperson votes no or wishes to abstain, they can read into the record what that abstention or that no vote was for. What was my argument? They can read that into the record. If it's a very contentious situation and you know that person is going to vote against it, you might ask them to put their objection or the reason for their abstention, conflict of interest or whatever it would be in writing so that they can have it read into the record and you can put it in your minutes without having to worry about paraphrasing anything. So your minutes need to be specific. We need to have the title. If there's a number, what the vote was. And then if the mayor does not, if the mayor vetoes the resolution, then you'll have that in a subsequent council meeting. And it will be brought up as an item on the agenda. So that the item, the mayor's objection is read to the council. And if the council chooses to take action and override the mayor's veto, they have an opportunity because you've put it on the agenda. So already you can see how when you're doing up the agenda or reviewing the agenda, then you'd see that there are certain actions that you should be prepared to take the minutes for. So any questions or any comments that you would like to make about the resolutions? I have never heard 30 clerks be this quiet. Okay, I'll just put it up to a zoom quiet and we'll go on. But if you need to bring in the big guns. Now this means that it, the topic that the council is going to be acting on is going to be of general or permanent nature. And again, here's the page two and three of the handout is going to help you with this. You need to do an ordinance and an ordinance has additional. Steps that we need to take for the council to be able to adopt a. Ordinance. So a definition of an ordinance is something that is general or permanent in nature. And by passing an ordinance, the council is making it a law, a local law. Some of those laws can be enforced through municipal infractions. Some of those things will be enforced because it's going to be a fine for having a late utility bill payment or something like that. So it's going to be something that is, is a permanent thing. It's going to go from council to council to council. And if they, if you want to change an ordinance or if you want to change a resolution for that matter, you would do it by amending the ordinance. And so as a result, in that third point, you'll see that again, we have a title and we have a numbering system. I would not recommend that your numbering system for your ordinances be the exact same cycle as the numbering of a resolution member. For a resolution, I use the example that perhaps you did it on an annual basis with a calendar where. 20,000, 2021-01 is the first resolution. Your numbering system for your ordinances should be sequential and should go on. It does not have to start and stop at each year, be it fiscal or calendar year. So you may have 432 different ordinances. We'll talk about how to manage those, but the numbering system should be sequential and it should be ongoing. It does not start and stop by the year. And then for ordinances, you should count to three, not count to three so that you can take a deep breath and have to get through this procedure. But on the other hand, you say one, two, three, because the state law says that we need to have three readings of each ordinance before the council can move to the final reading and adoption. Okay? For those of you who have one meeting a month, you say that takes three months to get anything done. The object is so that the public has an opportunity to give input before the council would approve it. However, because of situations, because you maybe are a once a month meeting or maybe it's because you want to get something changed for a July 1 begin date and you started talking about it in, in April or May, but the council think around with changes or whatever. You can suspend the rules. And have it all taken care of at one meeting. But there is a number of different procedures that you need to have. And there is a stronger vote in order to do that. Again, I have that listed in the handout and that is, I'm looking right now. Page that I can't find right now. It's called special votes. It's on page six, so if you want to take that note. So in order to go. To suspend the rules, you have to have three quarters affirmative vote of the council. So then you would have the council person introduce it and this person, another person seconded it and they pass it first time. Then they suspend the rules for the second reading or they suspend the rules for the second and third reading. You know, it depends upon how much they want to compress the time in order for it to happen. But they have to have three fourths of the vote of the council, not just the vote of those in the room. Then they can have the final passage. And then when is it effective? It's effective after you publish. After the, after the mayor signs it, after you publish. Or if the mayor doesn't sign it, you publish it and it's effective. Or if you have a subsequent date within the body of the ordinance, it can be effective later. So during budget, it's really a hot topic because your water fund isn't doing very well. So by ordinance, the council is going to change the rates. But they want to give the citizens a chance to get used to the rates. So they're going to pass the rates when it's a hot topic in January and February, but it will not be effective until July 1. So that would be in the body of the ordinance. And so even though you publish it in February after the council meeting, it will not become effective until July 1. So that's another way that it is subsequently effective. Okay, any questions on that? Again, if the mayor vetoes it, the council has an opportunity to override the veto. And then in the handout, we also have a list of ordinances that require a public hearing. Now, in addition to that list that's there, I wanted to make a comment about water and sewer public hearings before you would raise the rates. Technically, the Iowa code does not require you to have a public hearing before you raise the rates for water and sewer or garbage or something like that. Electric and garbage, excuse me, electric and natural gas are different because that's got some guidelines from the utility board at the state level. But technically you do not. However, many communities through their council procedures have adopted the policy of having a public hearing to make sure that the citizens know that their rates are going up before the council passes an ordinance for the rates to change. That's perfectly fine. That's always better to be open and make sure that citizens are aware of what's going on. But technically that is not required for that topic. However, there is a whole list of other topics that require you to have a public hearing before you have an ordinance. Can any of you tell me of one of those instances where I'm going to go back to resolutions? What instance do we have that we have to have a public hearing before we have a resolution? I'm going to open that up. Whoever wants to answer, go ahead and just yell it out.
Budget amendments?
Budget amendment is one. Your council is asked to have an adopting resolution for budgets and for budget amendments and that crazy new public hearing for the maximum property tax rate. Those are all three required to have an adopting resolution. And there has to be a public hearing before the council can adopt that resolution. Good one. Anybody else think of one where you're going to have a resolution that requires a public hearing? Okay, another couple that are on the list here, I'll just give you some samples here. When you approve your plans and specs for capital project, or if you have to have the council pass a resolution of necessity on. By going forward to have a public hearing on purchasing bonds to borrow money. You know, those are all things that are going to have a required public hearing on a resolution. And for those of you who are new, if you're going to be going through a bond resolution, it is highly, highly, highly recommended that you work with one of the bond councils in the state. Because when you do that, they give you all of the language. They give you the sequence for any public hearings you need, any resolutions you need. They give you the wording that the council can use for the motions so that you can get those embedded into your minutes. So that's really important that those things become sequential and that you have the proper hearings at the proper time. So that would be a very strong recommendation that we would have. And then as far as ordinances, when, what kind of public hearings do we need before we have an ordinance? Are you thinking, are you thinking? Just shout it out. Think about a time when we need to have a public hearing before you adopt the ordinance.
We have them for urban renewal amendments or urban renewal.
Especially when it comes to tax interim financing. Yes, that's a, that's a very good example of when you will have to have your public hearings. Some of the other ones that are on the list is when you create a certain districts for your boundaries for voting precincts. Again, as they talked about earlier, usually that's done in conjunction with the census, having numbers released. This year, that's not going to happen, but if you, if it was going to happen, you'd have to have a public hearing before you have that ordinance. Or if you're going to go through some condemnation, that's another one where you have to have a public hearing before the council can adopt the, the ordinance. So with that, again. You do have to have your ordinance published. And your ordinance can be summarized. Some of the ordinances can get really, really big and really, really detailed. And the law now allows us to create a summary as long as it is detailed enough for the citizen to understand the impact of the ordinance. Now, one of the other things I wanted to bring up, and especially to some of you new city clerks, is if your population is above the 200 threshold for using a newspaper instead of being able to post. If the council sets three places in the community that the city will post. If you have no newspaper in your community, then you can post your ordinances. You do not have to publish them in the newspaper that's 30 miles away. You have to publish your public hearing notices. You have to publish your minutes. But as far as the ordinances are concerned, you can post those in three different places as long as those three places are designated by an ordinance. So you have an ordinance designated in three places and you're going to post it in three places if you do not have a newspaper in town. That will save you some of your publication expenses. So. Does that help anybody out? We're going to save all kinds of money on those great big long ordinances that we can now post if we do not have that newspaper in our community anymore. And there's been so many communities that have lost their newspaper office that, you know, this, you want to make sure that you're aware of that particular law. Okay, I'm right now, you know, again, because we don't have the handout, it's, I can't give you a quiz that I had set up. But I do want to bring up two other topics. We talked a little bit about indexing your resolutions and your. Ordinances, but we also have to go through codification. And codification again is mentioned in the handout that I gave you. And that codification needs to be done at least once every five years. Unless you do an annual update or if you do a posting of each one. So let's talk about what a codification is besides a big scary word. Codification is when, within a five-year period, we'll say, because you guys are right on top of all this stuff. Or maybe you're inheriting a city hall that didn't do it within the last five years. Every time you amend an ordinance, you refer to and you strike out, supersede what was in the original ordinance. Sometimes it gets pretty confusing if you have to look into four, five or six different places over a period of five years for all of the different changes. So you go through a codification and you put everything together so that everything for sewer is in a sewer section and everything for land uses in a land use section and everything for street signs is in another section. And all of those things need to be recodified at least once every five years. Okay, so. Are there any questions on codification? I'm not seeing any. Holly, are you seeing any questions in the chat? I can't see the chat. Holly, are you seeing any questions in the chat? I can't see the chat.
I don't see anything either. Sorry.
Well, that's okay.
Are you sure nobody has a question? I think everybody's hungry.
Well, that could be, that could be. The codification, um. Section on the, the handout is on page nine, which is the last page. But it goes into more details about how you can maintain the code, so you don't have to do it once every five years. Okay, are there any questions about any open meeting or open records, uh, things that are going on? One of them that was threatened this year during legislation, which I don't think has passed. Is that we would not be able to include our weekends and holidays in our count for twenty-four hour notice. So if you had a meeting on, uh, Monday, you couldn't. Run in on Sun, Saturday or Sunday and make a change to the agenda. Because that Saturday and Sunday would no longer come in your twenty-four hours, but I haven't heard that that one passed. Again, quiet group.
Well, I appreciate your times, Cindy. Thanks so much for, for talking, um, about all this today, and. I'll be sure to get your handout, handout out, out after everything, um.
And I'll take questions from anybody after they get that, if they, um, have any questions, I'd be happy to address those. I have the contact information on the handout as well as on the screen.
Perfect. Okay, any last minute, or, you know, any last comments from anybody? Okay, we just got another, or a question quick. Uh, can you go over what we can give out for utility counts if asked?
Okay, um. It's public information. Locally, okay? Um, because of our Iowa code laws. However, I have always cautioned. The cities not to give out names on any. Outstanding list that they give to the council. Account numbers is fine, but names and addresses could be subject to the federal credit. Um, laws. So it could be used as, you know, if you have a list at the council table and somebody in the audience says, I want to see that list. And they see that their neighbor owes two hundred dollars, um, and said, well. They can't have any more loans at the bank because I saw that they got an outstanding bill with the city. Um, that doesn't fly. I do know that in some small communities, the, uh, mayor or council may. Have to have access to that information so they can go put the door knockers on because there's no other staff to do it. You know, you're gonna have to, but they're gonna have, you know, just take a pint of blood. And say, write your name in this pint of blood so that you're not gonna talk about it to anybody else, because we, again, don't want to hurt anybody's credit. Um, because they have outstanding bills with the city. Does that help?
Cindy, I just have a quick question, kind of from, um, what the league was talking about earlier, as far as. I mean, if they have a request, is, do you, can you charge them for that if? Or is that something that you should just have at your fingertips and it's?
Okay, the council should have access to the information about how much money is outstanding and due to the utilities, okay? So, uh, the council could make decisions, uh, do we really need to raise the rates, or do we really need to have stronger collection ordinance? Um, so in, in that regard, the council should get a monthly report from clerk saying how many dollars are outstanding. I'm suggesting that they not know the individual person or the individual address because. They could put two and two together there, and there could be some slander issues. But, um, you do need to have that information, uh, as far as how much is outstanding so the council can make decisions.
I'm just saying, if a person from off the street would come in and ask.
Uh, I, I don't think, think so, because that would be a situation where you would, uh, talk to your city attorney about redacting that person's name. And again, you cannot charge for that reduction, but you know, a magic marker on either side of a piece of paper is not gonna cost you any five hundred dollars. But usually when they do that, um, it's a citizen that hasn't been active and they want the entire city database about utilities, not just picking on one of their neighbors. We hope they don't pick on their neighbors anyway.
Anybody else have any quick questions while you have Cindy at your fingertips?
Is everybody happy that the street report is now due December one with everything else? We can all. Just wait a little bit longer to get those things done. Yeah, I see a thumbs up. I agree, Trish.
Okay, well, uh, thanks again, Cindy, for everything. We really appreciate it, and. If they have any questions, they can always reach out to you individually, so.
Okay, very good.
Until next time, take care.
Have a good day.
All right, and.
Bye, guys.
Thanks a lot for joining us today. We'll be in touch for the few, uh, for the fall session, and I'm sure we'll be hearing from you in between time, but. If you have any other, um, any topics of interest, let us know. We always, um, want to hear from you as far as what you want to hear at the next. Um, the next meeting, so that helps us plan, so feel free to share those with Marla or I, and have a wonderful afternoon, so thanks again for joining us.